Welcome. Today is Thursday, August 10th. We're here tonight for a workshop to discuss the proposed capital project. We're going to start the workshop like we do always with the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, first, let's open it.
Sure.
Okay, so is there a motion to open the workshop? Pete, Second, Ram, all in favor? Okay, and let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we thought we'd try this format tonight. It's a little more inviting. There are members of the public here. We ask you also to join in. And any comments and conversation, we're happy to have you join in on our work session. Our architects are here tonight. Carl, if you want to go ahead with where we're at with the project.
Sure. Sure, I'll just go back and give a brief overview. As many people are aware, the district has been working on a capital project plan for well over a year now. We had a facilities committee in place during the winter of 2016. That facilities committee interviewed architects. Shortly afterwards, they recommended KGND Architects to our Board of Education. They were approved and came onboard last summer. We've worked closely with them. We've had a number of different ideas and proposals that by the fall of 2016, we started to roll out to the public. We listened to feedback very carefully. The board considered a lot of different perspectives. And we continue to work on this plan and refine it. However, December 2016 and into January of 2017, there was this opportunity to purchase a piece of property at 110 Ridge Street. We did negotiate a deal, however, that was not supported by the public. So we did put our capital project planning on hold with the idea that we may be able to acquire property and expand the scope of the plan. With the public not approving it, I think it sent a message to us as a district and as a Board of Education maybe to scale back and be a bit less ambitious in the scope of the plan. So in the spring last year, we had two newly elected board members join us, both Peter Casson and Cynthia Tate. They have been following this capital project plan for many months. I recall seeing both of them at our meetings in the spring. And now they are officially onboard with us. And we decided to have a midsummer meeting with our architectural firm, who are here to present a more refined plan, which is really Proposition 1. That was the last proposition that we clearly explained to the public. Our new board members and our existing board members also had a few extra ideas that they proposed. And one of them was some enhanced security, looking at air conditioning and also looking at restructuring of some office space. So with that feedback, we passed it on to our architectural firm. And they have done some work for us. And they've refined some numbers and have a refined plan. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Walter Hauser from KGND Architects. And he will make a formal presentation.
Well, thanks for having me tonight. I'd like to introduce Jill Walsh. Jill Walsh is here. She works with OLA Consulting Engineers. And they're our mechanical engineering subconsultant. And Jill's been doing a lot of work behind the scenes, helping us evaluate the infrastructure items from your building condition survey, as well as explore some options related to the air conditioning study, which we'll talk about a little bit later on. So as Carl said, there's been a lot that's happened to date. And I'm not going to go through everything we've done, but certainly this has been a rather involved process, well over a year at this point. So what I wanted to do tonight was to just again go through the latest version of the proposal for both the work at Cottle and at the high school, middle school. We've made some minor scope adjustments based on feedback from our most recent meeting and then added some options for some additional work. So this plan should look pretty familiar at this point. We see in all the areas in purple are areas proposed to be renovated. The areas in blue are proposed new construction. So in the upper left corner, we're seeing the classroom addition, which would be the second floor at the end of Cottle. That'll be seven new instructional spaces plus a small group instructional room. In blue on the first floor, we see the reconstruction of the gym. So we end up with a gym that's similar in size to the high school gym. So you could have proper competitions there with adequate spectator space seating. And then in purple, we see, of course, the cafeteria and library renovations, the toilet room renovations, the creation of a steam room across from the cafeteria, some renovation or updating of the main office space. And then, of course, the new entry vestibule at the main entry, which provides proper configuration for access to the school and control of the front doors. And then you will notice we've added some renovation at the secondary entry to Cottle. And we have some options to discuss with regard to enhancing the security of that entrance as well. And across the street, we see the renovation of the athletic field. And just to remind you, now that does not include any additional parking and would be renovation and restoration as a natural turf surface. So it's going to be natural grass with a natural clay infield. So we have a couple of new things to show tonight. We've done a little bit of work on what the building could look like. And I just want to caveat a little bit of it in that specifically related to the library and cafeteria, we're showing an option where we do have a little bit of addition. Now ultimately what the facade looks like is there's a lot of work left to be done there. But what we find really exciting about this is you'll see this kind of reshapes the way Cottle looks from the street. And it freshens the building up on the outside as well as really enhances the interior components of the building. So what we're seeing here is the main entry, new main entry with high vertical space. As you know, there's a step up from the street there. So we can capture kind of a story and a half within that entry. So we'll have a really nice main entry sequence with a security office to the side. And then a little bit farther down, we see the cafeteria. And if you'll remember, cafeteria used to be the gymnasium. So there are very few windows, they're all up high. And we were really excited in the idea that we can bring some more natural light into that space and brighten it up quite a bit. This is a view of this new second story addition. So essentially, everything you see in brick and down is the existing building. And what we're proposing is to extend a little bit of brick and then possibly bring a lighter material. So something that's white or a color of a house to kind of minimize the feeling of this building. So it conceptually fits into the neighborhood and doesn't feel so heavy and imposing on the neighbors. We think this could be a very attractive look. Obviously, there's a lot of work to do on the design. We're at the conceptual phase, but we just wanted to show some ideas of what could be. And then this is the gymnasium from the back of the building. So again, you see, we want to explore something with a lot of natural light, potentially bringing some architecture to the roof to increase the volume of the space. And we really think that has the potential for a beautiful elementary school gym that could also house either middle school or JV activities as well. And quite frankly, it'll be big enough to house varsity activities if you decide that you have two varsity games going on at once. So this is an image of the interior, potentially of the library. And really what we're talking about in the library is an interior fit out for the most part. So replacing finishes, replacing furniture, and really updating this to kind of the next gen 21st century learning environment. And there are a lot of possibilities here, but this could really be an exciting space for students and teachers. And then the cafeteria. So this is showing additional glazing looking out to the street. So we're looking across to the athletic field now. And this space can be dramatically changed in terms of the quality of the interior environment with just the facade work alone. And then, of course, updating the finishes and improving the interior quality of the space. So at the high school, if you remember, we're proposing to renovate the cafeteria. So similar scope as to what we're talking about at Cottle, except we're not expanding it. And then we have some funds dedicated to upgrading the interiors of the main offices. This is not, if you remember, this is a step back version. It's not a full blown renovation. It's more of a facelift. So maybe some carpeting, painting, a little bit of furniture, that sort of thing. And then upgrades to the security at the main entry as well. And then the second floor, of course, renovation of the library. So this space would be completely renovated. And we've got some images for the high school as well. So this is, you know, a concept for the interior of the library space. Again, updating it to be a next gen learning environment, fully digitally capable with the next wave of furniture systems to allow for collaborative learning and different configurations within the space. And of course, new finishes and lighting. And this is just a view looking in the opposite direction. So budget. So we've done a little bit of work on the budget since we last talked. We've made some refinements based on the concepts. I think you'll notice that the number, as Carl noted, is fairly similar to what we've talked about in the past for this proposition. There have been some refinements related to the infrastructure, related to the door security. With regard to the infrastructure and door security, we found some overlap of items that were included in the building condition survey, five-year plan, and the door hardware that's proposed as part of this upgrade. If you remember, the door security has to do with upgrading exterior locks and interior locks for classrooms to provide lockdown functionality. And so all told, we're talking about, as shown, 12.9 million at Cottle Elementary School. That includes the addition for classroom space, the cafeteria renovation, the library renovation, the steam classroom renovation, the main entry work, the main office upgrades, the toilet room renovations, the reconstruction of the existing gym in the current footprint, more or less, and the playfield upgrades. At the high school, middle school, the two primary pieces of work are the library renovation, cafeteria renovation, the air conditioning of the third floor in the new addition, the high school main office, it's called renovation here, but it's really the upgrades. It's the facelift, the replacement of the turf on the field and the boiler system, boiler replacement. And that's a total of 4.9 million. And then district wide, we've rolled in all of the work identified as priority 1 through 4 in your 2015 building condition survey five-year plan. And then a line item for the interior door security, exterior door security, which we just reviewed. So there were a couple of items that we were asked to look at in addition to, I'll call that the base scope. At Cottle Elementary School, we've created an estimate for hardening the secondary entrance, not the primary entrance, the secondary entrance. And this primarily relates to the door system and the exterior storefront system. So this will provide some additional resistance to somebody trying to get into the building at that location. And that's about $50,000. There are some variables there, what we can do within that number. And it will definitely require a little further detailed analysis when we get into construction documents there. We have a couple of options available to us. So the big numbers on the screen are for air conditioning. We were asked to study what would it take to air condition both buildings fully. And I don't mean to upset anybody, it's a beautiful night, but these are big numbers. And it's a lot of work. So what we did was we actually broke out a couple of key spaces that we thought you may want to consider, just because the numbers are so large compared to all the other work we're doing. So if we were to decide, or if you were to decide to air condition the entirety of Cottle Elementary School, we think that's somewhere between a $3.5 to $4 million undertaking. It's quite a lot of work. There's a lot of space in the building. But we did give you some alternatives just to do some of the larger spaces. So if you were to consider adding air conditioning to the new gymnasium, air conditioning in the cafeteria or air conditioning in the library, we've provided those numbers separately. And then all the other spaces combined is about a $3.1 million project. So those numbers.
I just wanted to ask, is the new second floor air conditioned?
Yes.
And that's included?
Yes, the new second floor is air conditioned. The 3.1, all the numbers you see are fully baked numbers. They include the hard construction costs, contingencies, and project costs. And I will say that in addition to the mechanical work, all these numbers include a fair amount of general construction. So if we're, for instance, at Cottle, going to put some rooftop mounted units, there'd be some work related to steel, some roof penetrations, and then anything we need to do to run duct work above ceilings. So in some locations, we may be replacing hard ceilings with soffits, which are board construction. And in some locations, it may just be taking down the ceiling and replacing it. But certainly, there'd be some work related to penetrations of the roof, supporting the equipment, and then installing duct work in all the spaces. So I will say all these numbers include all of that work from soup to nuts. At the high school, again, it is a large number. It's almost, yeah, about $5 million to do the whole building. You know, this is a beautiful, beautiful building, but it offers some resistance to air conditioning, depending on the systems that we would propose. But, you know, it's built very well, but it's a bit of a fortress. So the idea of cutting penetrations for ducts and running ducts through corridors or up above ceilings provides some difficulty from general construction standpoint. And then there's also the problem of how do you do it and where do you put units? So we have, and Jill's done a tremendous amount of work on this, a concept of how to do all this. But again, it's a significant undertaking to satisfy both buildings in their entirety. At the top of the screen, you'll also notice we've included a couple of numbers just to remind you what the additions cost at Cottle Elementary School, the library and the cafeteria, only because the renderings we undertook included those additions. You'll notice they're a little bit, in particular, the cafeteria addition is, that number is a little smaller than what I think we've talked about in the past, only because we've added some new fenestration to the cafeteria in the base package. So if you say, "We don't want to do the addition, but we still want windows," we have windows covered in the base number. Probably not to the same extent you see, but we have something.
So these numbers would reflect bumping out the walls?
Yes.
The initial thing which you reviewed with the photos, that was just changing it but not increasing square footage?
The photos include the bump outs. And that's the reason I present this to you. Yeah, we can, go ahead.
Those three numbers at the top, were those included in the 20 million?
None of the numbers on this page are included in the 20 million. These are all separate, only because they're essentially new scope from what we talked about at our last meeting. So I wanted to keep those separate for you.
To change the facade, it would be a proportion of this cost, but maybe not all of it? To look like your renderings?
At cafeteria?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it looks a little lighter, but not probably.
Yeah, so the difference would really be in the structuring of it. So to create the, I'll go back to the image if you don't mind. So in this concept, this wall is brand new, the blue wall is brand new. It's pushed out towards the street. And we could structure this in such a way to kind of free span it, so to speak, so we could do anything with the windows we want within that wall. If we keep the existing wall, we'll just be limited to what we can do structurally within that wall. And we'll have to maintain, you know, the integrity of the building as it supports the roof. So it would just maybe be limited in the amount of windows we can put in.
And if that was the case, we went that route, that would be reflected in the $20 million number of the budget.
Yes, yeah, that's included.
If we went to this by moving the wall out, we'd have to add the 240.
You've got it, exactly, yep. So I didn't add the numbers together, you know, the 21 and 9, but, you know, you're in the $30 million range if you were to consider all this work. So hopefully this isn't, do you have any questions about the air conditioning? I know Jill has, she's got a lot of background knowledge and work done on this. Be happy to answer any additional questions on that if you do.
I have a question for the AC. Is there an option to do the units, not the window units, but the wall units?
Do you want to come up here to Jill and?
Jill, so we can pick you up.
You need to use the mic. Are you talking about like the Mitsubishi split units?
Yeah.
I don't know what they're called.
Yeah.
That's why I thought to ask. So for some of the spaces where you don't have the room for duct work, we did include the pricing, and we call those VRF. Those, they're like the Mitsubishi, you see them on sometime. So VRF is variable refrigerant flow. So it just allows you to better zone the spaces. So one space could have, so your classrooms could get a little bit more independent control. Some, you know, there's pluses and minuses. So we did, certainly for classrooms where we knew we could not fit duct work, we went with VRF. First cost is a little lower. Sometimes the packaged units, because they're central, they're a little bit, they probably have a longer, a little bit more of a service life to them. VRF, you know, say they're 15, sometimes the packaged rooftops are closer to 20. So we just, you know, there's little pluses and minuses for each system. What we did was for the pricing for what we have here, for the larger spaces is packaged rooftops. We feel that's just a better alternate for a very large space. For the classrooms in, certainly the high school and the middle school, that's all exactly that type of system, because we feel that's just easier. You don't have to disrupt the building as much to just, you're just running refrigerant piping in between the outdoor unit and the indoor unit. We do have to bring outdoor air in, and that would be a separate dedicated system, but it's, the duct work is smaller. So that's sort of, you know, like the pluses and minuses that we would look at for each space. For Cottle right now, the way it's priced is a packaged rooftop system. That's not to say we can't go with the other system. That's just how we thought there was space to have that, so we priced it that way.
Is it less money to?
Yeah, first cost sometimes for the VRF systems is less. Sometime, you know, there's more units, there's, each room has a unit. So maintenance can be a little higher, but they are more efficient typically. And the benefit you can get is, say you're doing something in a certain area, you only have to run those units in the classrooms. You don't have to run the whole packaged rooftop. Now, when we did the pricing and the layout, we did try to zone it so you wouldn't have this big system running just to have a couple of classrooms going. But you can get some efficiencies by going with VRF.
So is there any way to come up with an estimate of what it would cost just to air condition using those units, all the classrooms, just the classrooms?
Yeah, I think we, I think I have that. Well, I have my. Yeah, we can do that, yeah, because, yeah, sorry.
So what Jill does is she gives me a hard cost, all right? So what the contractor's going to get paid basically is bid price. And then I add the contingencies and the project costs to it. So it's design contingency and construction contingency. So her numbers are like 30% lower than what you ultimately see here. So just understand, what if she's going to tell you, I'm going to tell you 30% more.
Right, because we just look at mechanically and electrically what you'd really have to do. And then Walter has to kind of make it work within the building.
I'm sorry, one more thing. She doesn't include the general construction either. So if there's anything that has to do with the ceilings or walls or cut holes, that has to be added in as well, so.
So what we had for, say, just for, this is for the high school, for the classrooms, it was about $2 million. And that, that didn't include the 2006 addition. So, you know, we might want to.
So that third floor, so the new addition was priced separately?
Yes, yep. The 2006 addition, we priced separately. We actually had included that as like a packaged rooftop. And we just thought the other spaces, just because of the way the structure is and the architecture, we definitely, we probably would go VRF regardless, just it's probably the best way to handle those spaces.
What about Cottle?
So Cottle, we priced that as packaged. So I could probably, I'd probably have to just re-figure the numbers out. We had, package for the rooftops. Yeah, because we, yeah, so I probably would want to look at that. Because I'll give you my number then, Walter, but we priced it as packaged for Cottle only because we knew we could fit it. But I can go back and just figure that out, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, and that would be the classrooms in addition to the new classroom, because there are.
Yes, exactly, yes. So that would be a VRF and then a separate outside, you know, ventilation system.
So I think just in context, that's about 2/3 of the total cost you see there for the high school, middle school. It's probably similar to Cottle, just for order of magnitude purposes right now.
No, I was just, this is actually not a question for you. I was just going to mention it, because we can't do that, right?
Sure, this is open discussion.
No, for the middle school, high school, considering most of, I believe, every classroom has an air conditioner now. So would that even need to be considered for the classrooms?
You know what, Lee has worked on that and expanded the number of window units. You're talking about the window units?
Yeah.
Yes, and Lee can.
I think every classroom has it, yeah.
Every classroom, high school, middle school right now has a window unit.
So I'm just wondering, that would take off then, that all other spaces, that, what is that, $4 million?
Well, that would do, would be replace the window units with a more.
But do we have to? I'm just saying, if at Cottle, to me, like now that they have it here, at least it's something. I mean, I know down there, I mean, I speak from being in the building, it's brutal. And I think the necessity is, I get the cost, I guess, to do it in those big spaces. It's great to have, but the bottom line is those kids are in their classroom all day. So that's, I think that's where it's really critical.
Yeah, I think the interest in the community would.
That's, I'm listening to what people are saying.
More in the classrooms than there is anywhere else, yeah.
Then all other space, you're talking hallways, offices, everything?
Everything, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we typically don't put an air conditioner in the bathroom, but, you know, all the other occupied spaces.
I mean, the only, the, you know, absolutely, they could do with the window. The only reason why you might want to go with it is if people were complaining about noise of the units. And then you do get more, you know, they are more efficient. But, you know, I can't say for payback, you'll, you know, it'll be five years. It's a large cost, so, but that's typically why, you know, it's just, it's just a better system. But obviously, first cost is a, it's a, yeah, if we had the money, right, if we all had the money, it would be great.
Just thinking of what the community might think of the number. And then what they think might be the most important thing. And I'm thinking, from what I've heard, from the community, teachers, everything, Cottle is like almost.
Specifically the classrooms.
The classrooms are brutal.
Yeah.
The other thing to consider, I think, too, with all of this is the yearly operating cost of additional air conditioning.
Right, right.
If we would, the air conditioner and everything. So I don't know if you have a number, but I'm sure that number is probably significant in terms of our yearly operating cost.
Right, right, I mean, you would, that's why you would, certainly the window units, you know, you could shut them off and they're off. That's why the VRF is also nice, because it's zoned, so you can, you only have to cool the spaces you need. And that's the other reason why we try to do it in very limited areas, like off of one unit, so that you're not operating a large cooling plant just to cool some small areas.
So I'm sorry, so for Cottle, did you give us the cost?
No, not for the VRF. I didn't, I have to.
Well, I'm just thinking, where the, it's already on the budget for the high school, the third floor?
Yes.
And it says $140,000. So that's for how many classrooms? I don't know.
How many classrooms?
On the third floor, where it's, it says $140,000. Those are individual units, correct?
Oh, hold on a second.
I believe this is the new wing.
Yes, it's the new wing.
That's the new wing only, because the duct work is all there.
And the high school.
And the high school.
In the high school.
The third floor, you were going to do those roof things.
Your new.
Yeah, that was, that was with a package. Yeah, that was, that was with a packaged rooftop.
Oh, that's a pack.
Yes, that was, that's the way I priced it, right, for right now, was a packaged rooftop.
Because we do have existing ductwork.
Right, there is some existing ductwork, and, and in most cases, we, we would try to reuse ductwork. Now, not to say that if we went with VRF, we couldn't reuse that ductwork just for the ventilation system and then just use the VRF. But the way we, we priced it at this point was a packaged rooftop for that addition.
Just for clarity, so in, in the original proposal, proposition one, hundred and forty thousand for third floor air conditioning in the middle high school. Are those our new wing classrooms, Walter? Because I know the ductwork is there. There are four classrooms on the third floor in the new wing, it's only those four classrooms, it's not the old wing.
Correct.
Okay, so just everybody's clear.
Very, in the initial proposal, A, we had a cost of five hundred thousand dollars, and that I believe was for the entire.
I think Rob was really a placeholder.
It was.
Yeah, and then Jill and her team got in and were able to dial that number down.
Well, isn't the issue currently the entire third floor? Now, on the warm days is almost unusable?
Yes, but, but we have window units, and, and they're, they're not, you know, they, they help, but they're certainly not cooling those rooms. And they are noisy, so, so, but it's better than, you know, when it's a ninety-five degree day, that third floor becomes brutally hot in this building.
Although this spring, we did increase some of the larger rooms with larger units.
Some of the BT.
And increased the electric, electrical output.
Yes.
Capacity, so that they could run them. Some of the large classrooms did not have units that were large enough for them, so I think it's somewhat better this year.
Yes, and, and Lee has worked on making upgrades and improvements this past year.
So what if we were going to go with just the air conditioning, just the new wing? That's kinda, it's not really solving the issue there, right? We'd wanna, what would it be to do the entire third floor, including the old wing? Do we have that?
I didn't break it out that way, but we can.
And then to fill on that, just, how is the first and second floor in the, in the middle school, high school, is it relatively cool? I mean, is it cooler than coddle?
As you would expect, you know, the first floor is a little better, you know, second floor, and the third floor becomes really, I mean, the heat rises. So, you know, again, on a day like today, the building is fairly comfortable. Eighty-degree weather, low humidity, but when you start hitting the nineties and it's humid, it, it's pretty brutal in this building.
Yeah, I mean, because it seems like, you know, the nine million dollar number is crazy, we have to be able to do that, obviously, so I don't, I don't speak for myself, but I'm sure everybody agrees. So maybe there's some sort of a, a, a version, a smaller version of this, where we're kinda hitting all the high points, like maybe the whole third floor of the high, high school, middle school, and maybe getting all the classrooms in coddle. If there's some way we can do that, I think that would be good.
We can turn those numbers around. But I, you know, I think, as Jill said, the order of magnitude numbers are gonna be, you know, sixty to seventy percent, a coddle, the number you see in total. And then, you know, just the third floor of the high school, we'll put a number together on that, I don't know.
Well, I think it's important that we, that we have that number, because we're talking about, our issue is capacity. And if we think the class size and the number of classes in the high school is gonna continue to increase, my understanding is on warm days, you try not to use those classrooms, where they become just not really bearable to teach in. So we're gonna need those classrooms online.
Shaking the school, essentially, what happens, yeah.
So I mean, I think it's important, it's really important that we can air condition the top floor, so that you, the whole reason for the project is to create classroom space.
Right, but I think Lee's saying that it was addressed this year with bigger units, and it seems to have, right.
The hallways are still very warm, I'm very, really heated up, but the classrooms, I think, have been brought to a level where it's not unbearable at this point, because of the larger units.
So I guess if we could get a price back.
Absolutely.
For coddle, individual units, or obviously, it sounds like, we, we don't wanna cheap out on it, but we, and we don't wanna put a Band-Aid on, on a problem that's obviously something that's very important to, you know, student success and to our teachers, and, you know, we wanna be able to address it. But, yeah, these numbers are something we need to consider, so if you could come back to us on those.
Yep, I could do that.
And I have a question for you on where you had the library, we already have air conditioning right now, obviously, in the library.
Correct.
Were you thinking of replacing that with a more efficient newer unit?
No, I don't think we included that in our numbers.
Oh, that was in the library.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, too, I think it would be interesting to hear from the community, what do they value more? You know, I'm speaking also from like an educator point of view, when I was in the classroom, and it's very hard to teach and for kids to learn when it's so hot. So for me, if I was thinking of it, I would say some of the other things could sort of wait, whereas that is, they spend most of the day there.
Other things mean what?
If there are any other things that could be minimized, like in order to make sure coddle, you know, to me, that's very important, it's the quality of educating the student.
And, and to, to put this in perspective, though, we are looking at four to six weeks of the entire school year, where, where it is uncomfortable.
It's uncomfortable, I'm gonna say, because the way this, the, the weather has been, and I'm going by my kids when they come home, and also things you hear. September and October can be very hot.
Yes.
And I know the third floor gets hot here, but the whole coddle is like that third floor. And the class sizes are big, you know, now, so it's even, you know, more hot. I had teachers just say, the other, one teacher who had air conditioning, the other didn't, you know, she came into the room and was like, oh my God, my kids are like fading away. And she's like, oh my God, my kids are like working like crazy, it's, it's a difference.
Yeah, and there is, there is certainly an impact on student performance, I, I would agree. You know, up here, the concern is, of course, you know, during, you know, high stakes testing, region's exams, that's when it, it is the most uncomfortable. And you, you would like your students comfortable in, in a testing situation, so.
Well, I think that's what it was, the kids taking star assessment and things like that, and you had kids in coddle who were taking it in rooms where they were fading away, and the other ones.
Yeah.
I think also the fact that the new, the second floor in coddle, the new second floor will be air conditioned. And you have to, you know, create equitable conditions. You can't have some conditions where there's air conditioning, and then other classrooms where there is no air conditioning. So it just is a matter of what, what type of air conditioning could we put there? That's something that we could afford. So I think it, I think in, I think in fairness, if some of the rooms are gonna be air conditioned, and right now we have that, where because of certain health issues and different things, some issues, some classrooms aren't air conditioned while others aren't. I think it would be great if we could make it an even fair condition for all students, and again, at one price, we'll wait to hear from you on that.
Jill, is this correct to say that the new wing in the middle high school building is probably the most cost-effective location to implement central air?
Correct.
Just because it's a newer building, the ductwork is there.
Right.
The real, the costs start really going up dramatically because of the original building.
Correct.
You know, so, so another possibility is you do all three floors of the new wing, you know, and, and I know the principals will schedule, for example, region's exams. They, we have fresh air circulating, so we have the vents there, they have the best lighting, they're the largest rooms. So we always try to use those first for high stakes exams and region's exams. So maybe if you have, I believe, let me count the rooms for, I believe there are twelve, there are eleven or twelve rooms total, I believe eleven, in the new wing. So maybe we get a price for air conditioning, the entire new wing, all three floors. You do have the window units, which are not ideal, but, you know, considering the expense of this, the old wing has the window units. And then maybe all the classrooms in coddle, just whatever, whatever system is more cost-effective.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, when I had brought up the air conditioner, I was happy with just knowing if there were window units in the coddle classrooms, because hey, I'm sure those kids and the teachers would be happy, just that it's cool.
The concern about window units on the first floor, security. So that, that has come up, and, and, you know, when we've had some medical needs and situations where we needed to install, you know, for asthma, whatever it may be. So we have installed window units at coddle, but there is a concern over the security. So again, it's not ideal, it is noisy, it's better than, you know, ninety-five degrees sweltering heat. But I think, you know, I, I think you have some direction, Jill, as far as coming back to us with pricing.
I think what I heard was priced air conditioning in the remainder of the new wing at the high school, middle school.
All three floors.
Yeah, priced air conditioning the third floor, the remaining clusters on the third floor at the high school, middle school. And then priced air conditioning all the classrooms a couple.
I think that's right.
That's right.
Great.
Everyone agrees?
Great, that's excellent feedback. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about, about potential next steps, and I don't mean to be presumptuous with any of this. I just wanted to talk about kind of procedural things that need to happen from our perspective moving forward, and a little bit about what's going on with SED. SED, so if the board were to decide to move forward with a referendum vote in October, of course, you'd have to complete the secret process, establish a vote date. I know your attorney can help you with all of that, but a referendum date in October would mean that you could start the, the major portion of the construction the summer of two thousand and nineteen. It'll take us about six months to complete the work we have to do in terms of design documentation, and then we send that to the state for permitting. I only highlight this because SED has slipped to thirty-two weeks for, just for a review. So that's when we'll get comments from them, first wave of comments. So eight months for SED. So if you start in October of seventeen, just to get through permitting, you're gonna be like January of nineteen, essentially fourteen months later. And that'll give you, that'll put you in a very good window for bidding for work in the summer of two thousand and nineteen. And this is a little different than what, I think what we talked about previously in terms of schedule, primarily because of this one line item related to SED. They were at about twenty weeks, and the, the slipped to thirty-two weeks primarily on the mechanical side. So the mechanical engineering review of Jill's work will take eight months. So I just wanna make you aware of that, because it will potentially put some pressure on that start date in nineteen. Obviously, if, you know, whatever, whatever you decide with the vote, think about fourteen months out for, for permitting approvals. And then we need some period of time, roughly two months, to bid something, get it awarded, and get a contractor on board. And of course, the more time they can have in advance of that summer construction season, the better off they'll be to hit the ground running when the students leave the campuses. So with the start in the summer of two thousand and nineteen, you're gonna need two construction seasons, two summers, and you'll be fully opened in September of two thousand and twenty. Of course, the, some work can start sooner than that, so we think that the field could be done right away in the summer of eighteen. That's something that won't require a thirty-two week review period, that can be reviewed as an alteration level one by the state, which will be a two-week administrative review. So, you know, there's, that's probably not impacted as severely by any vote date, but I just wanna make you aware of what's going on with the state.
The tariff at the high school, is that also, that also be able to be done sooner?
Yeah, yeah, the field work could progress, yeah, 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 because there are no life safety issues related to that in terms of fire code and sort of thing.
So we have a little bit of wiggle room, though, on the front end of that summer nineteen, right, and not much.
Not much.
But my point is, is that I feel like August twenty-eighth is a little tight, there, where we are right now.
Yeah.
But I definitely understand the need and the importance of doing this in a way that we can start construction in the summer.
Yes.
But we have a little bit of wiggle room, right, the twenty-eighth isn't an absolute day, we have a little bit of.
You have wiggle room, I mean, if you get something into contract, I mean, this could be May or June. It just puts the contractor up against the gun a little bit for the start date, and the likelihood that they'll be prepped with steel and that sort of thing, ready to go for the classroom addition. It'll be, it'll put some pressure on that schedule. But, you know, the, the big wild card here is SED. They're talking about methods to relieve that thirty-two week, they, you may have heard, they're, they're talking about a, a third-party review system. That's not up and running yet, there's no timetable to it, I don't know where SED goes, but it's something that's just completely out of any of our control, really. So it probably shouldn't be a deciding factor, I just wanted to let you guys know what's going on with it. But you're right, there, there is wiggle room, but not a lot, yeah.
And, and, you know, I, I would just add, the timeline is very important, and Lee and I met with both Walter and, and Russ from KGND. And they explained that they really broke it down step by step. The, the goal of an October seventeenth vote is, is what we thought would be an ideal time. You know, everyone is usually back from vacation, settled into the school year. November is a challenging time, Lauren Truel, our board clerk, would be the person who would set up all, all the election, the public vote. November is difficult, because of course, we have our standard election day. Thanksgiving week is not a good week. Veterans Day, I believe, falls on the weekend, it's either Saturday or Sunday, but I think some municipalities closed on the Monday and, and for Veterans Day, so that may be difficult. We, we like to go with the Tuesday, people are conditioned to, you know, voting on Tuesdays, it's our election day. Monday, if municipalities are closed, if the county's closed, it may be difficult to get the machines in place, so, and there, we have to give a forty-five day public notice. But it's not forty-five days from when the board votes, because we have to get it published in, in the newspaper, so it's more like fifty, fifty-two days. So the thought is, you know, with two new board members particularly, this is a, this is a major decision. So we, we completely respect, I know this is a tight timeline. Probably October, an October vote is ideal, I would prefer that over a December vote, or I would recommend October over December. I think if we wait to, to do the referendum vote, if we wait until September, I do think a public vote would be then early December. And that's doable, and, and I, I think.
First week of December.
Probably the first week of December, so that, that's something that the board has to just think about, and, but you need to be comfortable. Again, it's a major decision, we just introduced some new request to, to analyze the air conditioning and weigh the, you know, the benefits versus the expense. So if we need the time, we, we will, you know, take that time to make the right decision here. But, you know, if there's any other thoughts, if anybody wants to, you know, weigh in on that, the timeline, because I think that's an important consideration.
Maybe, but if we, I get all that, if we needed just two more weeks or so, just to kinda, not rushing to think so much. We could presumably still do referendum end of October, very beginning of November, and then maybe do the vote with the public right after the holidays in early January. I mean, that's not, that's still putting us pretty good on that timetable, I would think.
I think if the board, it may require, it would be tight, it may require us adding a meeting in September. And if the board is willing, and, and, you know, the goal of trying to have a late October vote, trying to figure out when Halloween, what, what day Halloween is. You know, it, it, it may seem a little ridiculous, but you start, you start to look at all those things, holidays and. But, but yes, Peter, we certainly, if the board, especially if the board was willing to maybe add, add a meeting.
Halloween is on a Tuesday.
It's on, okay, so Halloween, we, I don't think we would want to do, do it on Halloween. The twenty-fourth may be difficult. November seventh is election day, you know, Lauren Truel analyzed it very carefully, and she, she knows, she's very familiar with, you know, all the steps that have to be taken, the ballots, the, the. It, it's pretty complicated.
Yeah, and I just, August twenty-eighth is basically here, I mean, it's like.
If we're not ready, we're, we're not ready.
Well, it's, I think it's also, we wanna have an opportunity for the community to engage with us, and, because it's, we wanna do this right. We wanna make sure we're putting out something that we're gonna have a buy-in from our community, that they feel good, so it's the board feeling good about it, obviously, but that the community is on board. Because obviously, we, we need this community to come together to, to get this passed, so I think it's a combination of things. You know, I, I don't know if you go item by item at this point, if there are things that we're looking to change or not change. I did have one question regarding the, the bump outs. What is the, is there, could you give us the, is there additional capacity, so on the library and the cafeteria? How much additional capacity do we get in that?
So you know that the, the space is relatively limited between the building and the sidewalk, so I'd have to go back and, and look at our numbers, but.
I thought it was like four hundred square.
That's about the order of magnitude, about three fifty and four hundred.
On both spaces.
Yes, that's what I recall.
I think, I think the cafeteria is about four hundred, I think the library is a little less, like the three hundred.
So it's mostly a cosmetic thing?
To some degree, to some degree, you, you will pick up some capacity, you know, depending on the type of furniture you put in there, you, you maybe will get an additional row of tables. But, you know, it's not twelve feet, you know, we'd love to do twelve feet, that would make a big difference.
The rendering of, of the new cafeteria looks great, but I see those windows, it makes me a little nervous, too. So I don't know what your thoughts are in terms of security.
So we've, we've made some provisions for that in our estimate, similar application to what we've talked about, similar places in the building. So there's some, there are some solutions we have for that, in terms of specifications on what we do there.
On what you do with the windows.
Mm-hmm.
In regards to the schedule and the calendar, if we were to move the bond referendum, be it the Board of Ed resolution, to the end of September, does everything move a month, or we have certain requirements?
Everything moves.
A month, the same amount of time or more?
The same amount of time.
Well, and it, it may move six or seven weeks, because as I explained, November is a difficult month to, to hold an election.
No, but I was thinking maybe December fifth, first week of December.
Yes, so, so then everything would be compared to October seventeen, which was the original goal. Yes, so, so then everything would be, compared to October seventeen, which was the original goal, you're out about six weeks and everything would move then. But, but again, what I'm hearing from Walter is that still may be doable, it just.
So just, full disclosure, Rob, this is where I get nervous, is when we talk about, you know, if this becomes a six or a seven in front of there, you could lose that construction season for the addition for the classroom and the gym. And if that happens, you're out a year on those. You need two construction seasons there and you're out, you're talking about twenty twenty-one at that point. And, you know, the, the reality is if you, if we can't get something awarded in that spring of nineteen, it's gonna impact the budget as well. That's why I get really concerned. I mean, you're not gonna have the capacity when you need it, you need it now. But, and the budget gets impacted because everything gets pushed out a year. You know, the school construction is really difficult because it's binary. You just get, you get a little window, you have to get a lot of work done. If you miss it, a lot of work is kind of out of the water. But you, it's doable. And the wild card is SCD. SCD, not that long ago, was like thirty-eight weeks. If that happens, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. But, you know, they may contract the review period and, and it would all be fine. It's just a risk where.
Not to put you on the spot, but what about the estimate for the design work, the six months? I mean, if we told you we needed four or five more weeks, could we pick up time there?
Anything is doable, anything is doable. And, and we can talk about that. If, if it's something we need to expedite, it just means that it's, it, it just requires additional time. We need to put additional manpower and, and staff it differently.
Another question I had, is there a budget line for like project management oversight? Where is that?
So it's baked into every cost. Every line item you see has the bid amount that we'd see from a contractor, it has contingencies, and then there's a, there's a project cost associated with that. I can just tell you what the number is, we carry across the board. Grab me for one second.
I think you're looking at December fifth, if, if we, if we need a little more time. December fifth, and Lauren looked at that as well. And that's not, it gives us also more time to promote and communicate the project. So, so we welcome the time.
So we carry a line item of twelve percent added to every cost for non-brick and mortar expenses. So the costs of hired professionals, architects, construction managers, as well as construction testing by third-party agencies, legal fees if you.
I guess my question is, is the oversight, the project management, is it someone that the school hires? Like, do we have our own independent person, or are they from the GC?
So anything related with the prime contractors is part of what we call a hard cost. So that's baked into the brick and mortar cost. You have, as the owner, have the option to hire a construction manager or clerk of the works who would be your representation in your direct oversight of the work. KGND architects will also perform oversight. Our role is a little different. We're primarily focused on the technical aspects of the project, make sure it's built correctly and in conformance with life safety. We do offer assistance in helping manage the budget, of course, and processing administrative change orders and requisitions and submittals. But make the mistake, these work, these projects require a lot of attention and your director of facilities has a full-time job already. So we see typically districts will hire a construction manager or clerk of the works to help facilitate these projects.
So what I'm saying, it's not an additional cost because it's somewhere built in.
We have it built in, we've covered you for that, yeah, within reason, yeah. As long as it's competitive fee, we've got you covered.
Can you just talk a little bit about the renovation to the, the office spaces in the main office here and both Cottle?
Sure. So a couple of things. The, the last time we met as a group, the, the direction we got was to scale back the renovation of those spaces. Our original numbers were to make them like new, basically take everything out, make it like a new, like you're walking into a new building when you walk into the main office. What we've done is reduced some of the costs associated with that, so this is more of a facelift. So we have enough money allocated to upgrade the finishes, so place carpeting, paint the walls, buy some new furniture and just freshen, freshen the space up. What we're not gonna do is totally gut renovate the toilet rooms. We're not gonna replace all the ceilings and lighting if it's in decent shape. It's a, it's a minimal upgrade to make the space look fresh and clean and inviting.
You're talking about the toilet rooms where in the main offices?
Yeah, yeah, there are a couple of toilet rooms in there, yeah.
Faculty, faculty.
Yeah, like single user toilet rooms.
No, I was just thinking, like I'm looking at other things that might be places that could be.
Yeah, in addition to that, we were asked to look at, is there any opportunity to consolidate some of these spaces? And our reaction at Cottle is they need more space. It's very cramped in the main office. Perhaps you have some opportunity here. What I would say though is if you're thinking about shifting people around and reusing spaces as instructional space, if you remember from our capacity study, Cottle was a building that was really stressed. And this building has a little bit of flexibility in terms of capacity, not a lot, but a little bit. You could shift people around, but I wouldn't recommend doing it as part of a capital project. And it would really weigh that with your capacity issue. So if this building starts to fill up, you feel overcrowded, you can make a squeeze. But I would definitely call it no way.
No, I wasn't thinking of it as a capital project, I was just thinking it's a lot of money for a facelift when things where the kids go, like, yes, all the main spaces are being facelifted, but the classrooms aren't. So I'm just thinking of like someone out in the community, if I'm hearing it. Like, is that something that has to be done? Like, when was the last time that some of them were renovated? And when was the last time classrooms were renovated? Those are questions as a parent and as a taxpayer, I'd be asking, like, why are they doing that?
Well, I can, just to give you some background, we do on an annual basis slowly renovate the classrooms. Like, for example, this summer, we're painting four or five classrooms, excuse me, we're replacing shades, where we're doing tiles. So every year, we, we do a little bit of freshening up as best we can afford in our general budget, what we're talking about. But we haven't really focused at all really on the offices and things like that. So this was an opportunity and maybe to reconfigure some of the offices a little bit more efficiently. But again, it's a decision, but just to give you background, that we do work on the classrooms slowly over time.
Could we do some of the office work within our, within our maintenance budget? Like I said, just coming in tonight, you can see that there's some work being done in the teacher's lounge. So I, I don't know what kind of work is being done in there.
There's, there are general summer cleaning.
Right, so if there's any painting or any of that, that could be done.
We could schedule that over time if that's all that was really required, if it were a larger scale project.
That's why I was asking what specifically is in this, that's why I'm questioning it. It's a lot of money for, I don't know what you'd consider a facelift. When I think of a facelift, yeah, I am thinking of painting and just sort of refreshing.
Yes.
So that sounds like a lot of money, just.
It's two hundred and forty thousand for the two together.
For the two of them, so that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Two forty-five.
Don't forget too, that's not a direct construction cost, that includes all of the things we were talking about, a reserve for contingency as well as the expenditures for your soft costs, your project costs.
Is it furniture, because you showed pictures of everything else, that's why I was asking.
Is there furniture included in, in these other costs for like the classroom, the second floor classroom, the library, the cafeteria, does that include furniture?
I believe yes.
Yes, we do have allowances for the, the furniture in the new classroom, furniture and equipment for the gymnasium. I'm just looking at the library at the high school quickly. The library at the high school and the cafeteria at the high school.
Because that's the other thing I think of also, now you're gonna put a new addition on Cottle, those classrooms are gonna be beautiful, and here I am, a kid in another classroom, and you're not do, we're not doing anything to sort of freshen those spaces up. So that's why I'm just thinking on the other end there.
But again, that's something that we try to look at in our annual budget, to try to do that slowly as well.
That's why I was saying, can that be, can that be something looked at in, you know, the offices? Why is that any different than a classroom?
Yeah, the offices, Cynthia, definitely not a need. You know, I think the offices are, are a bit rundown. You know, you, you have parents, students in and out of the offices all the time, you have visitors, you're interviewing, you know, potential employees and teachers. So I, I mean, I think you do want to make a nice impression, but you do have to weigh. I mean, it, it is, you know, over two hundred thousand, I agree, and it's certainly something if the board wishes to eliminate, that's something we can do.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if there are things people want more, like, that's why I'm just saying, what are other things that could sort of give a little?
The, the only thing I, I do want to say with, and this is with all due respect, if, if we go back to the public, and, and it's not that we don't value our, the voice of, of our community, but when we look, Walter changed the screen, but when you look at the count, the timeframe. If we start opening it up, and you certainly can take that approach where you open it up to a public and try to elicit public discussion, and, and you will get many different opinions, by the way. But that could, I, I just cautioned the board, it could potentially slow down the process. We did a year of, of public meetings and workshops and eliciting, you know, what, what are the, the concerns of the public? What are the needs? But, and we also started the process, you know, with, with an in-depth needs assessment and a facilities committee of twenty-three members that represented, you know, a lot of this community. So it's not that that's a wrong approach. I, I just need to, I need to go on record as saying it really could interfere with this timeline. And if, and if we're past December, I can tell you the, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, forget twenty nineteen, starting that second story on Cottle.
I think part of the problem was, I know it's been going on for a year and I was following it, it's because there were two proposals out there. So really, it was either people were way against one or way against the other. So now that there's one, maybe people are looking at this more closely. Whereas before, they were, even, even myself, I wasn't looking at as closely as I am now that there's only one on the table. I knew which one I definitely didn't want at all, but.
I, I think our.
Now that this one's in the picture, you know, now, you, you want it to pass. That's, that's why I'm looking at those.
Sure, our, our feedback, you know, Prop one was always, you know, it, it's evolved and it's been refined. But Prop one always seemed, and, and we, we did, you know, town hall style meetings in each, each community, all three communities in the district. The feedback on that in general was very positive. I think the controversy, as you point out, was over, you know, potentially, you know, more ambitious plan, which included a third gym and, and, you know, and the offices, I know that, the, the auditorium renovations. When we started to really get into a, you know, a larger scale plan, I think that's where the public raised some concern. There, there was support, but then there was also concern. But Prop one has pretty consistently been supported, but now, you know, you, you're down to the, the stage of refining and working out these details.
Well, one, one, one thought, and maybe Walter, you could just kind of tell us how we got back here.
Rob, Rob, you know, could you speak closer?
I was trying not to be in that.
Probably not at home, probably can't hear you.
But they couldn't see with my head in front of the TV either. My, so my question is, I noticed now, initially, we had infrastructure priorities one and two and three and four, and that was about two million dollars in total. As we spoke about other propositions after Prop one, we kind of started to limit the priorities three and four. I see here, we're considering adding those all back in. Have we looked at some of the priority threes and fours? And maybe there are a couple of those or some of those that can be removed, or maybe they could become part of the main budget, the maintenance budget from year over year, that don't have to be done, they are priorities three and four, and we can cut some there and maybe add some for the air conditioning or, but I, I don't know what that, those items are.
What is, yeah, what is that?
There was a building study done, a building assessment, and all the maintenance that had to be done on a building was categorized as a one, two, three or four.
Over the next five minutes.
Okay.
And the threes and fours were, yeah, these are nice to be done, but they're not high priority.
Well, I think the only concern is that by the time we get into construction, how much of a priority could it become four years from now? But I agree with Rob that if that could, number could be looked at, that's eight hundred and twenty-four thousand. If we could look at that and see if, also over a four or five year period, we, you know, tried to work that into our, our maintenance costs over the years and put money aside for those things, that instead of putting, spending all the money for that now.
We do have the money that we didn't spend on the property purchase.
Right, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But we also now, was the boiler always standalone as a line item? Or at one point was that part of priority one and two? Because that's a big number as well.
You tested my memory there a little bit, Rob, but I'll tell you that the costs haven't changed. We may have broken it out as a separate line item.
But it's not part of the priority one and two?
Separate number, independent number.
At one point, one is other work.
Yeah.
Now, what about the brickwork that we recently did? That was a couple hundred grand, wasn't it?
Right, that's all done.
Was that initially, that was initially part of the study as well?
Right, and we wouldn't have put that in there because we're doing.
So that was removed.
That was a project we did this year.
That's a good example of though, taking money out of our maintenance budget this year to do work that was initially part of.
Well, actually, we did that with a grant, so it was, it was though we had in our operating budget.
Yes.
Just one clarification to Walter, the, the bump out on, on the cafeteria, I guess the library as well, right? You said there is a, there is a cosmetic change we can make without a bump out?
Correct.
And what's the difference in cost there between, I'm sorry?
No, no, it's okay, I think I, I think I have this in my hand.
It doesn't, it's on.
The net difference, yeah.
I think that's supposed to be a question.
The bump out was in addition to the.
Yeah, this is the extra, so.
Just wouldn't be out a little bit.
Each ten.
Do we know what that would look like?
It'd be a little different, we wouldn't have the same structural, we couldn't do the same things with the windows.
So your library addition, assuming you didn't bump out, is the number on the budget.
Is the number, is the first number, right, okay.
If we were to bump it out, it's an additional.
It's an additional two hundred and forty.
If you like what you saw in, in the design, two forty more.
And then the cafeteria is a hundred and forty-five thousand, so that's significant.
I will say aesthetically, I think it does look very nice.
It's beautiful, yeah.
And I do like the lighter top. I think that really, as far as the neighborhood feel and the residents who live nearby, I think it's a much easier look than a whole brick, big brick building. So I appreciate that, so I, I.
But you need to do a bump out for that?
No, 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 I don't think so.
Well, well, for the cafeteria, you're limited, you're limited with the existing wall, am I right?
Yes, I mean, we haven't done a structural evaluation yet, but I know that we'll, we will be limited.
But even the second floor, the second floor, the new addition, that would be white, that would be the lighter color.
Yes.
I think that looks really good.
Even without the bump out?
Yeah, that's a different part of the building, so.
Yes, that's part of the building, I think that looks great.
Yeah.
You know, the idea is just create a base and something lighter up above, so it's.
Yeah, because then it doesn't look like it's high building, building.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, well, I think there's a lot for us to consider. And a couple of things that we could get back. I think the, I, I agree with a lot of Cynthia's comments regarding the office space only because one of the other concerns is down the road, we still do have the concern about the district offices. And if at one point we do need to move them, I hate to put any money into something that's sort of temporary. You know, if we have to move spaces because we need the space for classrooms and now we've invested, you know, two hundred thousand dollars into them.
Some of that investment may still carry over though into the new classroom potentially.
We're not actually looking at the district office or the central office area in the renovations. That was mostly the middle and high school. High school and the guidance areas in the center of the building. For that, for what we're showing us.
So that's for just those offices? So it's bad cost for just the principal offices and the guidance areas?
And again, it's not necessary.
I think my also be helpful, it was very helpful to the board at the time when we did a walkthrough. It's very different now for the new board members because we're not in session. It's very helpful to see if we can maybe plan a walkthrough before our next meeting where they can maybe, you know, get a feel of the spaces and see the interior spaces.
My, my concerns or my, not concerns, but where I don't feel as confident is on the middle school, high school items. I feel like the Cottle is, is pretty straightforward in my mind. But the middle, middle school, high school, particularly with the comments being made about the, the offices, I'd like to put eyes on that and kind of get a sense of it myself, but, you know, that's.
That's, yeah, that's easy to arrange. So, so going back to Cottle, it, it sounds to me like the board is still considering the bump out, but, but you need more time to, to, to consider whether or not it's worth it. So the library, an additional two forty to bump it out, cafeteria, an additional one forty-five. Capacity will not increase by much, there, there would be some, maybe thirty, thirty students, forty students. Of course, a much nicer look, so that has to be weighed. And, and am I, am I understanding correctly that you, you're still considering that? It's not off the table.
And I think it would be, and if we could maybe work some of the other numbers, like Rob suggested with the infrastructure, maybe if we put some of those projects off, we could do that bump out, maybe the D C.
It may be helpful, Michelle, if, if we, if we just quickly, even just now, just sort of, you know, what do we agree, what do we, what is not really debatable? What on this list are we all comfortable with?
Well, I don't think.
And I think you only left with a few items.
Right.
Which is the bump outs, the office renovations, of course, the equitancing is a big question mark right now, which we're gonna wait for feedback.
And the infra, infrastructure priorities three and four.
Right, so that's not a lot.
So that's not a lot, that's really.
So if we kind of agree that everything else is, is good, then we'd love. So if we kind of agree that everything else is, is good, then we're left discussing those issues.
Right.
I, I do have one other question that we haven't, hasn't come up tonight. So Walter, in, in one of your opening slides, you have that aerial view of, of Cottle. And it, if I recall correctly, the, the, the rock lot that we talked about so much, it looked like it was untouched. And my, my understanding is we, we were considering parking there and a turnaround for maybe cars or a bus. And why I'm very concerned about that is, well, first, it's, it's, I think, wasted space. We have some good property there. Secondly, for the gym construction, what I envision happening there would be, we talked about potentially putting up a tent. So our students, we have 600-plus students that need someplace for FISED. And I did mention, I think, months back, that if, if, if that were to become a parking lot, while gym construction was happening, maybe we could have a tent there, maybe some heaters, and at least a place for our students to, to have FISED and be able to run around at recess. And, and is that in the budget?
So the parking lot is no longer in that budget. If you remember, we had a line item for upgrades to Sienna Way. And that, that included a, I'm just going to point the screen if you don't mind. That included a turnaround area, where we were proposing to put a gate. And then we had a number of parking lots, diagonal slots. And then we had a parking lot developed in this area. Now, so the, a, a formal asphalt parking lot is not in the budget. There may be alternatives.
That has to be blasted as well, I believe.
Yeah, that's going to be expensive.
See, for me, there may, the parking is one part of that. We certainly can use an additional 18, 20 spaces, whatever it is. But I'm concerned about swing space and where do our students go during the construction phase? So I would ask the board, you know, to reconsider that. You know, right now, it's just an unused piece of land. And, and Walter, do you know the, the dimensions? I want to say it's about 100, 120 feet wide, maybe 150 deep, I forget. It's not, it's a good size.
I don't know off the top of my head, but it's roughly the size of, it's a little bit smaller than the, excuse me, the proposed gymnasium, which is going to be approximately, gym court itself is approximately 82 feet by 50 feet. So let's call it 100 by 50.
Oh, okay, okay, so.
And what was the?
As an alternative, I think we should consider that. But an alternative to that would be to take the parking lot behind the building and put up a tent structure, and then those teachers could park in Sienna Way for a period of time, as an alternative.
Yeah, that's true too, Rob.
That's a good idea, it's in the back of the building.
It's, you have the access point from in between that small room now, where they can get out easily, you don't have to worry about the street, for what that's worth.
Yeah.
The only comment I'd offer on that, there's some, there's some benefit to that, but it's going to be the only way the contractors can get back there to work on the gym, is through that parking lot. So just something to consider in terms of logistics, but.
How long will that construction be for that gym, do you think?
It's going to be the better part of a year, yeah.
So they would have to start that first?
So, yeah.
It's likely it'll be offline for a year.
For a whole school year.
I think so. I mean, I, at this point, it's hard to say how, that, that, you know, could you get it a little sooner? Maybe, but, you know, just.
Eight months, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, in the first summer, we want to take down the old gym and do our concrete work and hopefully get our steel up. That would be, if we could do that, we'd be in really good shape. And then work to enclose it, and then put the mechanical systems in.
I, I, I must say, the students need a place to run and to FISED.
Can you do it right on the field, the turf field, if need be?
Well, weather permitting, yes.
No, but I mean, put a tent there.
You, you probably could, but then.
Recess.
Yeah, you know, or softball games in the spring. I was envisioning a permanent tent, maybe even heaters, you know, and although being on blacktop is, is not ideal, you know, it's better than, better than nothing, you know, at this point. This is a challenging project for the elementary school, just logistically and, and, you know, really understanding how an elementary school works, this is a big challenge, and I do get concerned. And, and look, at the end of it, the investment is not a waste because at the end of it all, you do pick up 18 parking spaces, which.
And a turnaround.
Parking came up, Rob, I mean, you, you were with us during the facilities meetings. Parking came up repeatedly as, as a concern, and is anyone doing anything about parking? Parking is very difficult here. So at the end of it, you, you end up with some, some valuable parking.
Well, hopefully, when we get to the point where we talk a little bit more in detail, even on the field side, on the Crawford side, we talked about maybe there's diagonal parking. When the, when the whole playfield is redone, part of that maybe would be create diagonal parking on the Crawford Street side of the field. And then you could pick up a dozen spaces, 15 spaces with diagonal parking there. It's right now, it's foul territory on a field, so it's, that's wasted space.
But again, that, that cost was about 500, you said?
It was 500 according to our.
It included.
That was additional upgrades along Sienna Way with some diagonal parking on the first base side of the field as well.
And some landscape elements, yeah. So that was, that was encompassing a much larger scope of work. So we can, you know, we can give a number for that, yeah.
Get back to us with a number for, for that.
Yep.
Because there's blasting involved with the rock.
Yeah, yeah.
And now, would that take up the whole thing? Like you're taking away everything, the place space, whatever, that jungle gym thing?
No.
To the left of it.
I believe our, I believe our proposal was just in this area.
Just the spot that's like the hill, okay, right.
Did you have anything, Walter, to talk about with the, the front entrance of the, the, closer to, up, up the block? That was new?
The middle.
Are you not ready to talk about that right now?
Well, we can, I mean, maybe we do it offline, we can send you some, some information. It might be the best way to do it.
But, you know, Lee, I know Lee, Lee did some work, and I, I know they're very rough numbers, but just on, you know, possible cost per household as far as the tax increase.
So would you like to know what it would cost? I think, I think if anyone's out there, they would like to.
Well, and we, we just need to say, these are very rough numbers, of course, because we're, yeah, this is a work in progress.
And there are a lot of factors that go into figuring out how much aid we would get and how much, how we can amortize various different types of projects. Some things were allowed 20 years, some things were allowed 15 years, some things were allowed 65% state aid, some things were allowed 100% of the cost for state aid. So depending on what type of project we're doing, it's kind of a work in progress. But that all said, and I also should point out that when we last spoke, the state was providing us with 20, estimating we would be receiving 23.6% state aid. Our most recent estimate has now gone up slightly, it's 23.8% state aid. And that's for a project that gets voter approval. Also, you know, we have a new assessed value for the total community, it's gone down slightly, but those things don't really have a big impact. But, so I've revised the numbers over time, and that's why they may not match exactly to what you have seen before. In addition, I've talked to our capital markets advisors who advise us on how to go out for financing and what interest rate outlooks are. And they still feel that interest rates aren't trending down for long-term capital projects right now. They're not sure how much longer they'll be in this position. They've built in about 25 basis points in their estimate when they provided me with estimates for increases in long-term financing. But all that said, if we're looking at a 20 million point, 20.1 million dollar project for a house that's valued at $8,500 assessed value, and that's our typical average cost in the district or house value in the district, that would be $631 per year for additional costs for the entire project. So if you have a house that has an assessed value twice that, let's say at 17,000, you would double that $631 per year number, it's all, it's a ratio. The ratio factor, if you want to calculate your own household cost, is 74.244.
74.4.
Point 244, and you would multiply that by how many thousands your assessed value is. So if you have a $17,000 assessed value, it would be 74.244 times 17. If you have an 8,500 average house, it would be 74.244 times 8.5, because you have 8.5 thousands. For every $100,000 that you want to add in construction cost or take away, and assuming that it's 100% aidable kind of project, which would be a renovation-type project, that translates to about $3 per the typical home, the typical $8,500 home, or about 35 cents per thousand of your assessed value. So you can multiply that by 10, and that would be the cost of another million dollars, or taking away a million dollars in project work.
So that 631 was based on how much of the, what was the number?
So that 631 is based on a 20.1 million dollar project. And it's also based on, 631 is based on a house that's assessed at $8,500.
So if your house is assessed at 10,000, you would multiply 74.2 by 10? So it's basically $742.
Right.
And my recommendation, Lee and I spoke about this, you know, this, I think, will be very important to our community once we decide on a project. So if we decide that it's a $20 million project, $21 million project, $19 million project, whatever it is, then I think this should be posted online, and then our homeowners could, could go and, and figure out exactly what it will cost them. And I think we can also communicate this at our meetings. I think it's a little premature, but I thought the board should have this information just to get an idea.
That's right.
Okay, I also wanted to provide you with a slide that I had used in a previous, just to get a visual, of what the debt looks like to the district over time. Because we do lose, keep in mind, we do pay off some of our debt over time. And I have too many papers with me. But I will pull it up, pull it out for you as soon as I find it. And if I don't find it, I'll email it to you. But basically, what it looks like is, as we go through the course of the project, we are paying off older debt. So over time, as we get toward the end of this project, what we'll be paying is pretty much comparable to what we're paying now for debt. It's just the next five to six years, we still have some debt that we're finishing paying off, and that's when you see a big bump up in debt cost to the community members. Over time, and assuming we take care of a lot of the infrastructure in the buildings, we can probably see those numbers start to decline. And as those numbers start to decline, that might allow us some flexibility for new maintenance down the road, where we hopefully won't have to bond again. And there's various ways we can take a look at that.
I know, I think also though, in the past though, because of the tax cap, as debt gets paid off, sometimes we have to use that savings just.
And we may have to bond again just to use the tax cap limitations to be able to do those projects, you're right. But we can see how we can do that in the future.
You know, there's, did you have any comments, anything you wanted to ask or add?
And I do have that written after all, so I'll pass it around to you. It's hard to see, but the topper, the top section of those bars is a little darker, and that shows the added cost of new debt. And then again, you'll see the new debt doesn't even start, I have it starting in 1819. Depending on the timing of the project now, that new debt may not even start till 2021.
And Lee, for our new board members, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of this past debt was due to bonding for tax certs?
Much of it was tax cert bond. Some of it was the old wing, the new wing that's over here, that was built in 2007.
Okay.
But much of it was for tax certs.
Yeah, and there was a practice of, we did not have a tax cert reserve, or we had a very small, practically nothing. So when tax certs hit, especially the large ones, we were bonding, which you can do legally, but it's just not a good long-term strategy. So what we have done, and in the fall, I, you know, you will get a, a report, an update on our fund balance, but we've set up a tax cert reserve so we could pay for them. So last year, we had a few large tax certs hit, one was Sienna Way Country Club, and we were able to handle that with our reserve, and we've been planning, I, I think, more effectively and, and being more proactive in that area. So, so this is a good story that the debt, but on the negative side, we are stuck with this tax cap, you know, and last year, we were only able to increase the budget eight tenths of a percent. And that's a legitimate concern going forward, so we do need to be careful. So any other questions for Walter? Walter, you did a fantastic job, and thank you, it was a great presentation. Anything else, or for Jill, right, Jill, right? Yes, Jill, thank you.
My only question would be, can, who can provide us a breakdown of the priorities of that, those infrastructure priorities, so we can look at them and see if there are things and have a discussion? You can, okay.
Sorry, Rob, I just wanted to jump on the mic. We have that breakdown, and there's, it's from your 2015 bill of condition survey, five-year plan. So you guys actually sent that to us. But the, I will tell you, there are already a number of items that are scheduled for operating budget to be, to be done out of operating budget, annual maintenance budget, in addition to the priorities 1, 2, 3, and 4. So when you, when you see the list, you'll see that.
Okay, thank you.
Can you get access to this PowerPoint?
Yes, this, I've already asked, this will be posted on our website. We have all the past presentations, so I already sent it to Lauren Trull, who's on vacation this week, but I'm sure she will post it to the website, you know, within a day or so.
Okay, so we're meeting again on the 21st?
The 21st.
And we'll, for another workshop?
Yes.
So at that point, we'll have the additional information to take a look at?
Let's ask our, ask our people if, if they, they're able to do that. It's not that far away. So we, we tentatively had, have a, a meeting scheduled for, for August 21st. And Walter, if you think that's enough time for you to follow up? And Jill, you have some work to do with air conditioning?
Yeah, so the primary piece of work we have to do is to give you the revised or the breakdown on the air conditioning costs, as we discussed, for the, for the high school, new addition, the entirety of the new addition, the third floor classrooms in the high school, and then all the classrooms in Cottle. So we can be prepared for 21st with those numbers, absolutely.
Okay.
And then the rock lot, right?
Yes.
So again, these are just kind of reformatting estimates we've already put together and, and taking some pieces out.
Okay.
Refining, so, yeah, we'll be ready for the 21st.
Thank you so much. We'll see you then, 7:30 on the 21st. Any other financial questions for Lee at, at this point?
I don't think so.
No? Okay, Lee, thank you for, for that financial update.
Okay, we are now going to adjourn to go into executive session to discuss a legal agreement. So do I have a motion for, to adjourn into executive session? Cynthia, second, please, all in favor? Okay, thank you, everyone, thank you so much. It was really, really, very, very helpful, thank you.